Center Grove Community School Corporation. We indeed are very honored that you chose to stay in your evening with us. And I can guarantee you that you'll find out a lot of information and you'll have a good time and you'll walk away saying, "I'm so glad I went to that meeting." So, once again, welcome and thank you for all you do as parents and friends of our students. And we're very grateful for that.
I would like to inform you of our mission statement. Some of you may know that we develop knowledgeable, confident, and responsible citizens through inspirational and innovative learning new opportunities. At this time, I would welcome the principal at, let's see, where is?
Assistant Principal Allison Mills.
Okay, Allison Mills, who's going to deliver our pledge of allegiance.
Can I say a few kind words about this girl?
Of course, please do. Go to the microphone.
Okay.
Okay, so I have the privilege tonight to represent Maple Grove Elementary as our assistant principal and one of our finest students, Ms. Ava Hill. And I wanted to share just a little bit about why this sweet girl was chosen tonight. So Ava's family and friends admire her for her ability to overcome adversity. She's a very strong and determined young lady. In the classroom, her teacher shared that Ava is a rock star student in and out of the classroom. Every day she comes in with a smile on her face, ready to put forth her best effort. She has a huge heart for her others and is always willing to help someone in need. We are so thankful for her. Ava's friends describe her as a great friend who is always nice and very funny. One friend said she's, one friend shared, "She stands up. When something bad happens to a friend, she stands up for them." Ava is a very talented girl. She recently joined the high school show choir and performed alongside of them when they came to Maple Grove. Ava did not show a glimpse of nerves and took over the stage. She has a beautiful voice and we were so very proud of her skills. Ms. Tilarzik describes Ava by saying, "She is kind and puts others before herself. She always sees and believes the best in people, even if they don't see it in themselves. She shows bravery and courage in the face of adversity or hard times that she's faced in her life. She is willing to do challenging things and persevere through them. Ava, you are so kind, so caring, and a friend to so many. You make us so very proud. Thank you for being such a wonderful example to our students at Maple Grove. We're lucky to have you."
Ava, Ava.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ava.
Ava. We'd like to present you with this certificate for being here and doing the pledge for us this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, great job.
At this time, I would like to call for a motion to accept the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor of accepting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion carried. This evening, we have several recognitions and presentations, and we're very excited about that. So at this time, we will begin with recognizing some of those individuals. And I would call upon Mr. Jack Russell for the first one, which is a Shining Star Award.
Good evening to everyone. Tonight, I need to read this criteria to you for what we call the Shining Star Award. The Shining Star Award recognizes an employee, student, or community member who has gone beyond the expected to make the Center Grove community a better place. To be eligible for Shining Star Award, the nominee must have exhibited actions that go beyond his or her normal job duties or daily responsibilities. The nominee must demonstrate that he or she went above and beyond in one of four areas. He or she must have made a difference in the life of someone else, fostered a more productive workplace or school community, encouraged teamwork and collaboration within the Center Grove Community School Corporation or community, and initiated a positive change. You will see that our nominee tonight has done all four of these criteria. I would like to nominate Ben Nickerson for the Shining Star Award. Ben is a senior at Center Grove High School. He was also a four-year member of the basketball team. In December, Ben initiated a campaign to raise money for the family of Rashawn Haskins, who was a Southport High School senior football and basketball standout. Rashawn was killed in a car crash that also severely injured his sister Brianna. While many of us heard about this tragedy, Ben was inspired to do something to help. He spoke with his father, Brent, about initiating and leading a fundraising effort to assist the Haskins family during their time of need. With the support of Center Grove High School Principal Jeff Henderson, Ben launched a campaign known as Hoops for Haskins. He wrote a letter that was sent to every high school boys' basketball coach in the state. He challenged each basketball player to donate $1. The donations flowed in from athletic programs from around the state. Locally, the Center Grove Basketball Hardwood Club, Center Grove Gridiron Club, and the Center Grove High School Athletic Booster Club all supported Hoops for Haskins with sizable donations. Other groups and individuals also donated via GoFundMe and dined to donate events organized to help generate additional funds. On February 16th, before Southport's last varsity home game, Ben presented, he presented a check for the Haskins Memorial Fund in the amount of $22,208.92. This is in six months that this, this young man got this accomplished. So Ben is inspiring and outpouring of generosity for the Haskins family. We, the board, would like to recognize this incredible act of kindness by honoring Ben with the Shining Star Award.
I just want to add off the microphone, as a member of the, I'm not going to say older, but the experienced generation, you look back sometimes when you work with kids, and I always try to get to know senior class each year, and you wonder what's it going to be like, you know? And then you run into kids like this, and you realize, "It's going to be all right, you know? We're going to have those kids grow up to be leaders." Ben is one of those that just by example is a leader, regardless of the extra things that he does. The way he lives his life is an example to others to try to achieve too, so kudos to him.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, and congratulations to our recipient of a Shining Star. We continue with our recognition and presentations, and we will move forward to the National Merit Scholarship Award finalists. And those awards will be presented by Tricia Ferguson.
Well, good evening. It's great to see you all here, and this has got to be the best board meeting of the year. I know you guys have lots of fun at all of them. However, getting to honor our kids and get here and see them is really what it's all about. In addition to our kiddos like Ben who make us feel that there's hope for the future, we have another group of kids that we're going to talk about tonight. So these are our National Merit Scholarship finalists. The actual National Merit Scholars aren't named until later in May, which I don't know what they're waiting for, if they're getting ready to graduate, go ahead and tell them already. But the National Merit Scholar Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarship that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Programs by taking the PSAT and National Merit Scholarship Test. Finalists in the competition, chosen by meeting high academic standards, are at the highest scoring entrance in each state and have a record of consistently very high academic performance in all of grades nine through 12 and in any college course worked taken. So we have four students tonight. If you could hold your applause till we get all of them up here, and students, if you want to come up in this open area here. Tonight, we have Corey Briscoe. He's the son of Tim and Jessica Briscoe. We have Luke Irons. He is the son of Kirk and Kurt and Teresa Irons. Justin Zhu. He is the son of Sean Zhu and Li Hongheng. And then we also have Ellie Jarzinski, who is the daughter of Kate and Steve Jarzinski. So these are our National Merit Scholar finalists. And then Ellie, if you could just stay, because we also have another award tonight that Ellie is receiving. And this week, I get the honor of going downtown to a banquet to honor her as one of Indiana's Academic All-Stars. So again, Ms. Ellie Jarzinski. And then we also have another academic award that is the National Silver Medal Award Winner, and that is Zoe McLeod. Zoe here tonight? Zoe, come on in. Thank you so much, Zoe. In addition to all of our amazing academic award winners, we also take this time every year to honor our foreign exchange students. The amount of courage that it must take to travel thousands of miles to come and live in a new place with people that you probably have never met before speaks a lot to these students' passion for education and for learning about America. So tonight, as I read their names, I'm going to read their name and their host family. And kiddos, if you guys want to come up, I'm going to apologize ahead of time because I'm not that great at some of these pronunciations. But that doesn't mean we don't love you and we aren't glad you're here. Okay, so we have the host family of Kim, Ken, and Julie Pycham. Hosted Sabine Fay from Germany this year. We have Carlotta Fernandez Garcia Andre from Spain and Sabrine Ferraria from Brazil, who were both hosted by John and Melissa Plunkett. We have Paleo Paxavina from Italy, who is hosted by Brian and Karen Schulte. Eduardo Andre Perez Zuinga from Chile, hosted by Albert and Cindy Koklevadal. Gabriel Alexandre Pinchelli from Brazil, and he is hosted by his aunt and uncle, Lucio and Anna Kroll. He is actually, for those of you that understand the visa process, our very first F1 visa student at Center Grove High School. So if you know about visas, that's a really big deal, so we're very excited about that. And if you want to hear all about it, just talk to me later, because it's really cool. Then we have Sofia Rodriguez de Souza Leo from Brazil, who is hosted by William and Julie Weinberg. Alexis Simon from Hungary, who is hosted by Kevin Crowley. Carlos Vento de Villa from Spain, hosted by Greg Struck and Erica Contrao. Yon Cho Yum from South Korea, who is hosted by Fred and Rochelle Sudler. Eduardo Miranda Roma Bazar from Brazil, who is hosted by Jason and Cheryl Shake. And then Matilda Quadreni from Italy, who is hosted by Ann Coons. So let's welcome them all and thank them for bringing their culture to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tricia. We will continue the awards with the Scholastic Art Awards, and we ask Mr. Rick Jones to be the presenter of those awards.
Good evening. Could all the art students that did show up tonight stand up over here? So what we're going to do is what we do every year. We have a slideshow that will allow you to see the award-winning artwork. And when the student's art is up on the screen, if you just step forward and kind of do a little wave so those in the audience can recognize that you're the artist that created the award-winning art. Joining me up here is Katie Miller, one of the six art teachers at the high school. We are very fortunate this year that every art teacher that entered art had at least one award winner. Center Grove's been doing this for many, many years. I've been at Center Grove for 33 years, and the tradition of excellence in art was well established by the time I arrived. The Scholastic Art Competition, it's a regional competition that then goes into a national competition. The Indiana region is one of the larger regions as far as providing art to the national level. This year, only over 3,500 works of art were entered at our region for central Indiana. The region goes from north of Kokomo all the way down to southern Indiana, down by the Ohio River. Center Grove, we entered just over 100 works of art, and out of that, 64 received awards, which is a wonderful, wonderful percentage. Our students earned 11 Gold Key Awards, 18 Silver Key Awards, and 35 Honorable Mention Awards. Both the Gold and Silver Key Awards were on display at Clues Hall on the Butler Campus, and that was from January 30th through March 17th. Those students that are Gold Key winners, they had their artwork entered into the national competition. And this year, as already noted, Zoe McLeod is a National Silver Medal winner representing Center Grove High School. So let's draw our attention to the screen and, and see the wonderful art that they have created. Eventually. Buffering.
Okay. It was working earlier. It's really big.
There you go. Here it comes. Here we go.
Let's give a big hand for the artist. You may be aware that next month, on May 9th, the Center Grove Fine Arts Festival begins in the Hall of Excellence, and it will run through, I believe the 18th is the last day, which is a Saturday. And come out, there's just so much great art being created by students from all the grade levels, and it's neat seeing it all together in one location. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Congratulations to all of the students for your outstanding work. We hope you have enjoyed your visit here in the United States with us, and we wish you well as you return to your respective homes. And a special thanks to Mr. Jones for his leadership and for the outstanding work that he has done for 30 years here at Center Grove High School. We come to the point this evening where we give our residents to have an opportunity to speak publicly. You were to have signed up prior to the evening's meeting. It's my belief that we do not have any public comments this evening. Okay, we will move forward now to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do you, I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, we do have a couple of introductions today.
Thank you. With the personnel report approved, we just hired two SROs, and you guys shouldn't take offense to everybody leaving right before I introduce you. It has nothing to do with you guys. But we have tonight James Cooper. James is a graduate of Perry Meridian High School, and he attended Harper College where he wrestled collegiately. He's worked with the Johnson County Sheriff's Department as a jail deputy, the Johnson County Juvenile Corrections Center as an officer, and he was, in 2016, he was hired at the University of Indianapolis Police Department. As a graduate of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy and is married and has three children and lives here in Johnson County. He's an avid wrestler, and he's looking forward to working with the wrestling program. Thanks, James.
Welcome.
And also with us, David Beasley. David also grew up in Johnson County. He attended IUPUI and majored in criminal justice while playing tennis. He was a seven-time Summit Horizon League Academic Award winner, graduated with a 3.76 GPA, and he is the all-time leader in singles wins at IUPUI. While in college, he interned with the DEA and worked with the Indianapolis Airport Police, managing all their IT projects, and was hired on at full-time after graduating from IUPUI, and attended the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy as well. David is married, lives in Johnson County, and if I didn't say so, James is also married, has three children, and they both live in Johnson County. So we're real happy to have him on board and looking forward to getting him in the groove. So welcome, gentlemen. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for being here with us, and thank you for all that you've done. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Long. All right, we now move to the action items on our agenda. Dr. Arkonov?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. Our first action item this evening, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution confirming lease, approving issuance of bonds, and resolution approving additional appropriations. This evening is an advertised meeting, so I'll turn this over to you, Mrs. Toomey, to begin the hearing.
Okay. I now say that this hearing is open. Dr. Gabriel, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just have a very brief presentation. This is the fourth board meeting in which we've discussed this project, so I don't feel it necessary to go into a lot of detail. You can see the dates of the three previous times when we've had conversation about this project and basically presented longer versions of the same information. This is the project description that we've used in our, in our previous public meetings. Purpose of this project is improving spaces, learning spaces and safety, upgrading the pool and adding some classroom and group spaces. And the cost estimates, we are continuing to use the cost estimates that you see there. Total cost of the project, including all the financing and soft costs, is $45 million. And again, this is what you've seen three other times. This evening, this is what we are asking the board to do, to affirm the following in the resolution, that we are holding a hearing to consider public input, that we've determined that a need exists for this project. The board's authorizing the selling of $45 million in bonds, approving the issuance of a bond anticipation note, approving the plans and estimates that we have talked about since the original 10-28 hearing last October, confirming the necessary amendments to the financing documents, and then also approving an additional appropriation, which gives us the budget authority to spend the $45 million. So that's a brief summary of the purpose of the hearing this evening. I turn this back over to Mrs. Toomey.
At this time, I will close the hearing. Oh, I need to seek public input before I close it. Is there any input? All right, thank you very much. And at this time, since there are no public comments, we will close this hearing. Are there any board comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Moving ahead with- We need a motion for the hearing to close it?
No, I'm sorry, to vote on the motion.
Okay, we'll vote on the motion then.
So, we need a recommended, we need a motion.
I moved that we approve the resolution confirming the lease and approving the issuance of bonds and vans and related materials, and the resolution approving additional appropriation of high school, for the high school building project.
Well, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. You have heard the motion and the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will accept a bid for installation of traffic light. Dr. Arkhanov?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. This evening, I'm recommending that the board approve, I recommend that the board accept bid for installation of traffic light near the Education Service Center, and Dr. Long will provide you with some additional information.
Thank you. We've been working with Crossroads Engineers, Trent Newport, to develop a plan to put a stoplight in at this intersection. It's actually Trojan Lane and Stones Crossing, or for the little-known name, Abraham Sales Road, which is what leads into here. On April 12th, we opened one bid for the installation of a four-way stoplight there at Trojan Lane and Stones Crossing. While we didn't get the number of bids that we were hoping to get, we realized that this was during the peak time, a lot of NDOT work is being done, and most people like to be a subcontractor on those, so very few people want to do, you know, independent work. But it did come in under the estimate that Crossroads Engineer had given us, so we feel like it was a good bid. Mr. Newport did an analysis of the bids. They recommend accepting the bid for the Hoosier Company in the amount of $299,602.68. We believe that this to be the lowest and most responsible bid for the project. The work will begin probably right after school is out and hopefully be done about the time school starts, which I know you guys hear me say that all the time. But again, we're going to try to do that, and going to ask you later to have an extra month of summer so I can get those done.
I do want to emphasize that he said hopefully.
Yeah, I was trying to leave a little wiggle room there, so.
Dr. Long, I do want to comment that, you know, at this time of year, we all talk about a honey-do list of things that we have to do in the spring. You're just fortunate enough to get a honey-do list from the entire school corporation.
And I'll be coming back more and more, asking you to approve things.
Any other comments from the board?
I guess just a question. I probably already know the answer to this. I assume we've discussed this with the county and they're on board and have blessed us to do this project?
We have. You know, we've originally approached the county and asked them about putting one in. However, it's too close to the one at Morgantown and Stones Crossing Road to meet their criteria to be able to install another one. But they've worked with us very closely. Mr. Newport's been working with them. They've approved the plans. We've taken it through them, and they've been very supportive of the idea. I might add, too, that it will predominantly stay green for the east and west traffic, but there'll be sensors in the road for people pulling out of the high school or pulling out of this building that would allow it to change, you know. But the idea was to try to keep traffic moving as much as possible. And on big event nights like graduation, or basketball, or football, we'll be able to control that so we can get people out of the parking lot a little bit faster and also a little bit safer. As you remember, we had a police officer struck out there in one morning directing traffic, so we feel like this is safer for the community, safer for our police officers, and should be a good asset for us.
And this eliminate the need for an officer to be there after football games and in the morning and...
We might have somebody there after a football game, but they won't be standing out in the middle of the road in the dark, depending on the size of the traffic, whether they need us to manually adjust the lights.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess that was my question. If someone is out there, like any modern lights, we're going to be able to manually adjust them to pick up the flow?
Yes, there's a control that's in the box that we'll be able, we'll have access to, and it'll be on this side, you know, where the police officer normally parks his car. So, it'll be close to his car, yeah, safe and a safe location.
How does this interact with our, well, two questions, I guess. One, related, a little unrelated to this exact thing, but one, how does it interact with our roundabout we've installed? And then, second, just a quick follow-up, are we getting, how's our roundabout doing at the high school?
I think it's gone really well. It's allowed traffic to move more quickly, but it also eliminates that intersection where people aren't sure whether it's my turn to go or your turn to go, and so it makes it a little bit safer of getting out there. I thought you were going to ask me, how does it interact with the stoplight down there, and we've asked them to adjust that just a little bit to keep traffic from backing up both north of Stones Crossing Road, and also south, or sorry, north of Morgantown Road, and also south as people are waiting to get in. So, they're going to make a little fine-tune adjustment and should be, they should sync fairly well. The other thing that we've done is for the fire departments, it's got the, what's it called? Opticon. So, if an emergency vehicle comes through, it changes the light, so they don't have to stop at a light. So, it will help that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, then, do I hear a motion to accept the bid?
Madam President, I move that we accept the bid for the signal project as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do I hear a second?
We need to say the amount.
I said as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. All those in favor of accepting the bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, my iPad shut off.
Okay, we proceed now with another action item, approving a change order for the Walnut Grove Playground. Dr. Arkhanov?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. This evening, I'm recommending the board approve a change order to the Walnut Grove Playground, and Dr. Long will provide you with some additional information.
Thank you. As we began the preparation to install the playground for Walnut Grove, we realized that it was underdesigned for the number of students and the capacity that we'll have in that building, so we'd like to increase the size of the primary playground. The additional cost to provide the same-sized playground, both equipment and surface, as all of the other elementary schools, will be $129,551.14. We'll pay this out of the owner's contingency. And as I'm sure many of you know, anything over $50,000, a change order over $50,000 requires board approval. I believe with only about two months left to go, this is the first one that we've had to bring to you. So, we've done a pretty nice job, and I thank Hunt Construction and Lancer and BB for being able to help us do that. So, we recommend approval of the change order.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Questions from the board?
We're probably obviously going to approve this, but I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Proctor on Saturday night, and I'm thankful that he caught this prior to, and I guess part of my frustration is, is the playground company missed this, the architects missed this, and fortunately, our principal caught it in time, which is fortunate. And I know how these contracts work. I've built buildings, and they have a no harm, no fault clause in their contract, but I hope there was some kind of conversation with both those groups about this particular topic.
There was, and actually, the engineer for, the civil and site engineer for Lancer and BB is the group that designed this, and so we've had a conversation with them and as well with Lancer and BB.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess just a follow-up to that.
Sure.
We had a conversation. How did it happen? Was it just missed? Was it a bad calculation? How did it happen?
You know what? I don't have a definitive answer for how that happened. I think it was an error. You know, when we built the other five playgrounds, we asked the playground manufacturer to give us the exact same thing that we had at Walnut Grove at the other five elementary schools, to put that at the other five elementary schools. But the other five elementary schools are sized appropriately for their enrollment. Maybe you could say we didn't know the exact enrollment, but we did know the exact capacity, so we should have planned based on the capacity, not on the anticipated enrollment.
On the flip side, I do want to say that the project where it's at right now, to have the first change order come before us, means there's a lot of good things going on out there. So, I don't want to focus on the fact that this one's here. It'd be great if we finished the project, and this is the only one we have.
Sure.
Unless there's a deductive out there that can save us a lot of money. We'd be happy to see a deductive change order.
Well, and we may still have some of those. There have been some other change orders. They just haven't reached the threshold, you know, to bring those to the board.
But to get one this far along and have one change order in front of us is a good feat. So, I don't think this is a bad reflection on the group. Mistakes happen.
Sure.
But I do, you know, appreciate the response that, you know, when it does happen, we want to know why.
Sure, and we need, you know, we, as a school corporation too, we need to learn and make sure that we're following up as well. So, I think all of us learned a lot from this one.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Long. And are there further questions from the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the change order?
Madam President, I move that we accept the change order for the Walnut Grove Playground in the amount of $121,104 as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please...
Sorry. I think you said the wrong number.
No, actually, the change order, they tend to round on change orders. I gave you the exact dollar amount.
So, we got it right?
So, yeah, the exact change order is $121,104.
Isn't that what I said?
It is. We were just talking about what I put on the undercover.
Okay.
And not a penny more.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me correct that. It's actually $129,551. $8,447 came from their allowance, so it is a total of $129,551.
Can we just make a new motion just for clarification?
Hold it.
What they're showing on the detail, guys, that are showing what bucket it came from.
Right.
And then ultimately, the total price is the $129. Is that right, Phil?
It is correct.
Okay, do you want to...
All right, so I'm going to amend that motion, Pam.
I've already heard the motion.
What's that?
Oh, great.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to just re-read that.
I move that we approve the change order with, is it really with Hunt?
The change order comes from Hunt. It's actually with Sinclair Recreation, but...
Hunt processes the...
Hunt processes the change order.
Okay. I move that we approve the change order with Hunt Construction Group in the amount of $129,551.14.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. A motion has been made in second to change the change order for the Walnut Grove Playground. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion carried. Thank you very much, and once again, thanks to Dr. Long.
Thank you.
All right, our next action item is to approve the student handbooks for the 2019-20 school year. Dr. Arkhanov?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. This evening, I'm recommending that the board approve the changes to the 2019-2020 school handbooks, student, I'm sorry, school handbooks, student handbooks. And Dr. Long will provide you with some additional information.
Thank you. We've shared with you the proposed changes for the update and the updates for the 1920 Elementary and Secondary Student Handbooks. Mrs. Norman, our Health Services Coordinator, reviewed the Health Services section of the Secondary and Elementary Handbooks, along with Mr. Harkin, Ms. Lawson, and Ms. Rodman, and recommends updating the Guidelines for Medical Medication Administration, Immunization Policies, and Vision and Hearing Screening to follow the state and school requirements. One of the things that we've heard, and we'll probably be talking about this more, is the awareness of our anonymous reporting hotline, our TIP. So, Stacy created a Safe Schools Alert page for anonymous reporting. We're going to put this in every handbook, so we don't have to rely on a poster in a building, or somebody seeing something, or looking on the website. This will be in every handbook. Students and parents alike will be able to see this and be able to access that. We think that'll be a positive change for the handbook. The high school deans are recommending changes to their handbook to provide some consistency between the handbook and their practices with a focus on improving attendance and minimize student time in the office. They feel like every time a student's in the office, the longer they're in the office, the more instructional time they're missing, so they're trying to be a little more consistent. The two middle school deans and assistant principals are recommending a couple minor revisions unique to their handbooks. I'd be happy to answer any questions on these. My assistant, Lynn Dever, did a nice job of laying out the current policy, the new policy, and the rationale for that. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Do we have any questions?
I don't know that I have a question as much as a comment. In going through this and preparing for it, I noticed the Safe School Alert reported adding to the handbook, as you said. I think Stacy was pushing for that. I think that's a fabulous idea, because I think there's some folks out there that don't know this is out there.
Right.
Are we doing anything else to turn these into posters, to get them out in and among the school, to let people know there's a way they can report it?
We have been. It's on all of our websites, the Communication Department, and I use that term loosely. They've made posters. They've been in the middle schools, the high school, the elementary schools. So, every year, we try to do that again to kind of refresh everybody's memory and put some posters up, but we think this might be a better constant reminder, but we will continue with the posters.
I think it's a great idea to put it in here. So, whoever, Stacy, thank you for putting that in.
I think we push out reminders through our Facebook and Twitter accounts as well on this.
I got two today, actually, so.
Great.
Also putting it in the middle school agenda.
Great.
And I have a question. When the students at the beginning of each year get the handbooks, do they have to sign that they've read it, and do parents have to sign, or just the students?
Do they do it at the middle school?
They do at the middle school level, and they actually teach...
Parents and kids.
Yes, and in all grade levels, they have class meetings. That's actually K, or three, excuse me, six through 12. The middle school, actually, then they teach that as part of their history classes and citizenship and within the first week to 10 days of school.
I think I remember signing something at the high school beginning of the school year. I just, I like that. They signed a lot of things at the beginning of the school year.
That's, yes, there's a lot.
That's kind of the only drawback, is that time, it's accountability.
In addition to sending that notice out, Stacy, is there a way to do that via Skyward, like at the beginning of each semester, just as a reminder as well? So, just an added, because not all parents have social media sites.
Do you agree with students that way?
Yep, okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
I have a question, just to clarify, on the dress code. So, the middle school is not allowed to wear a hoodie anymore?
Up on their, over their head. I mean, they can wear a hooded sweatshirt, but they just can't have it flipped up over their head. That's their...
Okay. All right, are we ready for a motion? I'd like to hear a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Elementary and Secondary Student Handbooks as asked.
Madam President, I move that we approve the changes to the 2019-20 Elementary and Secondary Student Handbooks as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. The Elementary and Secondary Student Handbooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, thank you very much. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Our next item on the action items is to approve the Student Center Interest Survey. Dr. Arkhanov?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. This evening, I'm recommending that the board approve the Student Career Interest Survey. Mrs. Nora Hoover will provide you with some additional information.
Thank you. We are...
We are seeking approval tonight to administer an electronic career survey to our high school students. Exploring is a division of Crossroads of America Council of Boy Scouts, and their vision is to shape the workforce of tomorrow by engaging and mentoring today's youth in career and life-enhancing opportunities. This survey is used by Exploring to create new after-school programs for youth to learn about different careers and hobbies from businesses in central Indiana. Programs are based on five areas of emphasis, which are career opportunities, leadership experience, life skills, citizenship, and character education. Results are used by Exploring for these programs only and are shared with our guidance staff. Following the survey, our students would have the opportunity to participate voluntarily in any of the programs designed by Exploring.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hoover. Questions from the board?
My only question, the second one, is this any change from what we've done in the past? Is this a new program, just?
It's not a new program. It would be new for Center Grove. A lot of the area schools that border us and across central Indiana are already participating. So it would just, we're just adding it to what we do. In addition to a lot of the other really quality guidance things we're doing, particularly six through 12, but this would give us another component, maybe some things outside of school that kids could explore careers.
And is this just something we think is a long time coming, or has there been a change that now we want to do this and we haven't in the past?
I think we were personally approached and sold on what they're offering for our students.
And, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Do I hear a motion for this?
I had another comment.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Russell.
A friend of mine that works in career things and owns a local, successful business has talked to me several times how they've had trouble getting people out of high school to go into careers and things. So I'd like to see this one more tool that goes on it. And they actually sent me another thing about where some schools are having career signing days for the kids that go out right after high school, just like we do for our sports guys and gals and so forth. So, you know, I don't know if that's something we really could add, but it was kind of a meaningful thing when you think at 18, you've decided you're going to a career and not college. So just something to think about on that particular thing with this added tool that we have now.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any other discussion? All right. I'm ready for a motion to approve.
Madam President, I move that we approve the Exploring Student Career Interest Survey for the high school students as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We come now to the adoption of textbooks and materials. Thank you. And Dr. Arkonoff?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. I know this is Mr. Alexander's favorite time of year and favorite action item. So this evening, I'm asking that the board approve, recommending that the board approve the 2019-2020 textbook and supplemental materials for adoption. And we're going to have Mrs. Shannon Carol Fry, Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, and Mrs. Marcy Shawstak, Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, come to the podium to provide you with some additional information.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to present to you for the 2019-20 school year, the textbook materials and fees. I thought I would take you through the materials for elementary, some of the highlights first, and then hand it over to Mrs. Shannon Carol Fry for secondary materials. So some of the highlights in elementary this upcoming school year, we are re-adopting the reading series. We've just ended a six-year cycle on our reading series, and we are re-adopting for two more years, because we have some teams doing great work and making sure in the next selection, we're really well-informed and want to make a really quality selection. So we're re-adopting in reading, and I think you'll like the fee sheet because of that when we get to the fees. In technology, the technology fee is increasing only in second grade, and this is because we've seen a need for more word processing on keyboards. So we are adding a keyboard into second grade, because they have iPads. And so to help prepare them for third grade and state testing, that's all online, that was an addition that has been asked quite a few times by teachers. So that is a slight increase in the technology fee, but we'll get to that fee sheet the next segment here in our board meeting. And finally, one of the most exciting highlights of the materials this upcoming school year is I have been working with our physical education departments across all five buildings, and we have never before had a PE fee for supplies in their curriculum. They have been sustaining their program and their materials through fundraisers, grants, and building funds. So each building has been very differently funded, depending on how those turn out in their buildings. So that team has actually worked, they're together every Wednesday during early release time, and they've worked really hard to align their curriculum, and now all of their supplies are going to be aligned as well with this new material added for our elementary students.
Thank you.
This is somewhat of a miscellaneous year. You'll notice that we had a lot of departments for adoption this year at the secondary level. So just to go through a couple of highlights, you'll notice that in the high school, that they've re-adopted for art, and as a result, we have adopted those materials long enough, we will no longer have to charge students for access to those. In sixth through eighth, they're requesting to adopt an online resource. This is parallel to what's been adopted for our K-5 art programs previously, and so we're glad to see that continue. In business education, we have a variety of courses. I'm always excited to see that we have Intro to Accounting. We have Business Law and Ethics. I thought we had several people that might be interested in that. And moving into our VU courses, you may remember that we have a memorandum of understanding with Vincent's University, and so when those courses by that Vincent's allows us to teach for dual-credit change, we make alignment changes as well. We have a global campus offering for nutrition and wellness. We've had so many students that are interested in taking that course, that in order to offer them, we're now offering that on global campus, which allows students to fit that into their schedule. And we're simply adopting materials that are parallel to the course that students would take if they were in the course, in the building, for a period of time. We also have the opportunity, because the state has added a course called Analytical Algebra II. And this course is intended to be more real-world application of Algebra II. For some students, Algebra II is a stumbling block towards their Core 40, and we're very excited to see the state of Indiana is now allowing us to offer this. This course has the same rigor as Algebra II, and as a result, we're offering and recommending to use the same course materials. However, we'll only be adopting a class set, because the teachers have said they want to make most of this hands-on and just use that Algebra II textbook resource in the classroom level. Under music, you may have noticed that we offer AP Music Theory. My mom was a band director. She is very excited that we offer that. My children will go to high school, and if my mom has anything to do about it, they'll take that course. Tech Ed is also re-adopting, or not re-adopting, also adopting some additional project, Lead the Way. We have Principles of Engineering, Digital Electronics. Our course offerings, if this adoption process doesn't put that in front of you, how variety, what a variety of courses we're offering for our kids to meet their needs. I don't think many other years of textbook adoption will do that. The last thing I want to bring to your, I guess I have two more, Tech Ed in grades six through eight. There is a change, and you'll hear me talk about this in the fee structure. Our eighth-grade computers course has not had adopted materials, and the teachers have decided that they would like to adopt materials that parallel the courses at the high school that the students would feed into. So because we've not had a course fee for that prior, that will be, that makes a change in the eighth-grade amounts. And then the last thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that, and it parallels well with what Mrs. Shawstak said about the PE teachers in K-5 wanting to add a fee structure. The Aware Department has, that name, for those that were around when that name was developed, it makes a lot of sense. But for others, when we say wellness and physical education, they know more what we mean. And because wellness is such an important thing for our community to know that's what we're teaching, where the teachers have requested to change their department name to Wellness and Physical Education. So you'll hear me saying that in the future, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. We also are recommending that we extend our services with HealthEd Pros into our eighth-grade curriculum. We've had it in our sixth and seventh, but not in eighth. So again, you'll see that's impacting our fee structure when we talk about that a little bit later. Any questions about our materials we're recommending?
This shouldn't come as a surprise, based on my emails earlier about the HealthEd Pro program. I think I've been pretty vocal about my dissatisfaction with those programs over the years. As a parent, I was, and it was a previous program before that, but as a parent, I was less than satisfied with the program. I've talked to both my kids about this, and from a student's perspective, they weren't overly impressed either. This year, I'd like to make a request that we do some kind of exit survey with both the students and the parents to get feedback on the program. You know, we spend, the parents are spending some bucks on this, and I want to make sure that we're getting out of this what we, as a community and parents, believe we want to get out of this.
I am more than happy to take that recommendation. I will let you know that there isn't a exit survey process that HealthEd Pros provides to us, and they give us a summary at the end of each year. I can't speak to the student component, so I will absolutely go back and make sure that I have that part.
I don't believe there's a parent or a student component to that. If there was, I never received it as a parent.
I absolutely will look into that. I will tell you that the feedback that I have been given from teachers and via the surveys that have been given to me with summary has been very positive, which is why, over the years since our switch from, previously, we had CPR, Creating Positive Relationships, when that began to tank, we stepped away from that completely. When the K-5 program, excuse me, when the fifth-grade program went well with HealthEd Pros, as you probably remember, we then extended it to sixth grade and then seventh grade last year. This is the recommended continuation. I absolutely think that we need to make sure that our programs are effective and we're getting what we need, and I'm happy to look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion from the presentation? First of all, thank you, ladies, very much for your input. We really appreciate it. Do I hear a motion to accept the textbook and materials?
Madam President, I make a motion that we adopt the textbook and materials as presented this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. A motion has been made in second to approve the textbook and materials. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, ladies, very, very much.
Thank you.
We proceed now to approval of the 2020 textbook rental and fees. Dr. Arkonoff?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. So this evening, I'm recommending that the board approve the textbook rental and fees for 2019-2020, and these fine ladies will be up here again to provide you with some additional information.
You're not finished with us yet.
So now you want us to approve paying for them now?
That is correct.
Right.
So if we don't approve paying for them, the last one we've got?
Right. We're going to have to go to the vendor and ask for a really good deal. We can bargain with the best of them. So this evening in elementary, with our textbook fees, I am happy to report that this year, we have actually gone down in every single grade level in our fees. And if you look at our trend over the past few years, we have been decreasing in our fees. I can't say that will continue to be the trend, especially in two years when we have to look at reading, because we've put, we had a six-year cycle and we're re-adopting for two years. So we will have in two years a new reading adoption, and those are always a bit more pricey. But this year, we have gone down in our fees, and I have, Mrs. Carol Fry and I have made sure, we have a really tight process in place. With Mrs. Kimmel, the Secretary to the Teaching and Learning Department, she helps us work with the teams to really fine-tune the process and oversee exactly what they're choosing and have a critical eye on subscription prices, fee prices, what the formula would be over that six-year period for students. But mostly, I could attribute the decrease in elementary to that re-adoption of reading. Even with the technology fee increase in second grade, they went down, but only $2. The rest of the grade levels went down, at least, I think, $5 was the next least amount. So that's elementary.
Thank you very much.
So for secondary, I know, it's very exciting. In middle school, you will see that in sixth and seventh grade, they dropped slightly, and in eighth grade, I already mentioned the two components that have caused that to go up a little bit. At the high school, it always feels like I'm not giving you clear information when I show you this, but you have to remember that wide variety of courses that students could take. So we have students that may take AP Chinese 5, and that individual textbook fee is $175, which, again, I hope my daughter doesn't take that particular course, because she's going to be in AP Music Theory in that one, actually. I hope she does take Chinese 5. So our variety of courses, including dual credits, et cetera. So we try to provide that detail to you in the detail sheets that you receive as a board, and if you ever want more information, we can try to do that. And parents also are always encouraged, when they get their book fees, to contact schools if they have any questions about what those fees are.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Question? I do have one thing before your questions, because I want to see if I can prevent a question by answering it. You may have noticed, Mrs. Parker, could you go back to the elementary version? You may have noticed that on the Bridges component, I made an error. Oh, Mrs. Parker is very efficient. So the punchline is, because the elementary, it's a trick question, because the elementary fees went down, the Bridges fees for elementary, K-5, also went down. I made a misstatement on the Bridges component when I said that K-5 Bridges fees were all the same continuing. That's not correct. Secondary is the same. Elementary was reduced to reflect the same reductions in elementary. Now I'm done.
Okay. Questions from board members?
I was just curious. Maybe it's the same every year, but I saw several times re-adopt. And I assume we encourage our departments to really look at that every year or when it's adoption time. Do we really need to buy a new concept, or is what we have still up to date? Because that's a ton of money.
It is, and we also involve our tech friends, such as Jenna Cooper, who is our Connected Learning Coordinator. I think I got her title right. She spends a lot of time with our textbook adoption committees, encouraging them to make sure that they know what kind of E options we have. In fact, this past fall, we hosted a statewide conference for people to come learn about options for textbooks that are all electronic. We continue to try to partner those kinds of option choices, as well as, if it's not new content, then can we continue to, and they're in good shape, can we continue to use those resources until we can find an electronic option? So absolutely, we try to look at every option to reduce those fees for parents and for kids.
And do you see in the future where the books will be downloaded and not carrying 50-pound backpacks?
We actually, most of our adoptions now, at least for the last three years that I've done it, are almost always bundles, which means kids have access, in many cases, to paper and to the electronic format. Most of the publishers, in addition to having the textbook, when this first started, it was literally just PDFs of textbooks. Now they are live documents, they interact, they take kids out to other sites, they do labs. Those, but what we're finding is that our learners and our teachers still, because they come in such a variety, still, many like the paper source. And there's some research out there that says that having access to paper versions of things is still an important thing to consider. So we are moving in that direction. We've not been ready to make the commitment in a bulk of our courses, but you saw in art, we've gone all online.
My dream would be that there's a classroom set for whatever the subject, but then the kids have it downloaded, and so they're not carrying those heavy kids have it downloaded, and so they're not carrying those heavy books.
I would say that that is, absolutely. And then we deliver that via our LMS, Canvas. Kids have access to that through Canvas. That is very common for most of our courses.
Okay, further questions? Thank you so much.
So.
Oh, we got another question?
You know I'm going to comment on this every year.
I was waiting.
So first things first, I do want to thank you and your teams for the time you guys have taken to do this and reduction of the fees. And I know you guys spent a lot of time and energy and effort into this, and it's very much appreciated, not only by the board but by parents, as they write checks for three and four students. And as a parent of an early college student, I know how much the fluctuation is there in the checks that I write for book rental. But, you know, I'm still holding out hope in my tenure on the board that the state actually gets to a point where we don't have to have textbook rental fees. We're what, one of five states now?
We are.
I think it's down to five. It was seven. But yeah, there's like only five states that still charge a textbook rental fee. It's paid for by the state. So maybe that needs to be our lobbying effort here over the next couple of years to get out of that mode and put that emphasis back on education.
Great feedback. I appreciate that. And I do want to point out that in our process, it is really our teachers who do the work of vetting these resources and digging in and trying and piloting. So you need to make sure that you know that it's our teachers that are doing the work.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, the chair is open for a motion to accept.
Madam President, I move that we approve the textbook rental fees for 2019-20.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. The motion has been made in second to approve the textbook rental and fees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion carried. All right, we come now to announcements.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to turn the floor over just for a moment to Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Dr. Arkonoff. I failed, I failed during our personnel report to mention one other special guest we have with us, and really appreciate her staying the entire meeting. So Sidney Patberg is going to be joining our Walnut Grove team as the art teacher next year. So Sidney, I thank you for coming tonight. You want to introduce who you brought with you?
Oh.
Awesome. Thanks for coming. So Sidney, oh, thank you very much. Sidney, student top four at Center Grove Elementary last year, and she's up at HSE now. So we look forward to having you here, and thanks for being a trooper, staying for the whole meeting.
All right.
I do not have anything this evening, Toomey.
Anyone else have other business?
I have some things.
All right, Mr. Russell?
First of all, kudos to Mrs. Ray Coe, who's in attendance tonight, the executive director of the foundation. There was another very successful gala this past weekend. Sometimes you think it runs on crews, and that's because she does a whole lot of stuff behind the scenes and before it goes. So her and her staff did excellent job. Some dates to remind you of, the Harlem Wizards, which is a chance to see different staff members of different departments play against the Harlem Wizards in a game on April 28 at 3:00 p.m. Also, the Alumni and Friends is having a meeting the 29th at 6:00 at the IT Building. And the, on your areas, you notice two pieces of paper. One was a notice for the Alternative Academy graduation, and the other is, I try every month to attend the State Board of Education Business Meeting. It's an all-day thing on the first Wednesday of each month. And I just wanted you to start getting me the agenda, so you can just kind of see what they're going through and what they're discussing. That's it.
Any other announcements? I might mention that April 30 is a teacher celebration night in the high school at 6:30. Rock the Block, April 27, 7:30 a.m. at the high school. And I believe that's all the announcements that I have. Does anyone else have other announcements? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Motion has been made in second to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mrs.